What happened to the theme music?
They're waiting.
Okay, welcome to the Historic Preservation Commission's special meeting of June 30th, 2016. May I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Cognati?
Present.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Shire?
Here.
Commissioner Vartanian?
Here.
Chair Vidor?
Here.
Everyone is present.
Okay. The agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Monday, May 20, uh, June 27th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall. We'll look at the minutes now. Can I have everybody review the minutes and then have any additions or corrections? I have none.
I have none.
None.
Everybody okay? Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second from Ms. Shire. All in favor? Everybody?
Aye.
Are we doing roll call, or?
Are we gonna do roll call, or just acclamation?
Yeah, I think we're allowed to do a verbal, but we may as well...
Alright.
Who moved? Was it Commissioner Vartanian?
Yes.
And then second.
Second, okay. Commissioner Cognati?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Commissioner Vartanian?
Yes.
Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Very good.
Oral communications, I don't think we have anything, do we? So I will take comments from commissioners. Okay, I have an...
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
I have comments. Um, it was with great joy to announce that Rockhaven Sanitarium, which was voted back on April 18th to be listed on the California Register of Historic Resources with a six-zero vote, was nominated then to be on the National Register of Historic Places. Friends of Rockhaven Board was recently notified by email of the National Register's weekly list, 6/24/2016, with the notice that the Director of the National Park Service is pleased to send you the following announcements and actions on properties for the National Register of Historic Places. On that list for California, Los Angeles County, Rockhaven Sanitarium Historic District Number 16000355, listed 6/9/16. So now Glendale can be proud to have another property on the National Register. And just for housekeeping, this will be the eighth property in Glendale on the National Register. For those wondering what the others are, it's Glendale Register 10, the Southern Pacific Railroad Depot, Glendale Register 14, the Glendale YMCA, Glendale Register 17, the Hotel Glendale, Glendale Register 20, the Alex Theater, Glendale Register 22, the Darby House, Glendale Register 32, the U.S. Post Office on Broadway, and Glendale Register 45, Art Avine. My joy is only tempered by the fact that this is the only property in Glendale that is not, that is on both the state and national register, but not the Glendale Register. I have to ask why. Both the state and federal recognize this historic significance, should not Glendale also, by putting Rockhaven on the Glendale, on the Glendale Register also. Thank you.
If I can add, there is one other Glendale property that was just listed recently on the National Register, which is the Schaefer House on Whiting Woods Road by John Lautner, which is an amazing house. The owner is evidently interested in listing, but we haven't got a formal application yet. So we do actually have two that aren't on the Glendale Register, but we're hopeful that at least that one will. And then in all of the city's materials in terms of the potential development of the Rockhaven site, one of the conditions of development proposed, at least at this point, that we expect and hope will continue through the process, is that the site will be listed, or will be nominated to the Glendale Register in the future, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a brief announcement. On July 9th, Saturday, from 5:30 in the evening until 8 o'clock at night, we in Adams Hill in South Glendale will be having a celebration to honor the listing of our little streamlined modern gas station, the Richfield Oil Company 1936 Gas Station, which is in the center of our mini park on the Glendale Register. It is Glendale Register 111, a very nice three-line streamlined modern number, and we're...
White line, few...
Yeah, I think that just, just came out beautifully. And we're very pleased ourselves as the commission to be sponsoring, along with Community Parks and Services, the Glendale Historical Society, and the Adams Hill Neighborhood Association. So we hope everybody will join us, including, of course, our neighbors, but anyone else. We're having food trucks, and we are going to have the station decorated, compliments of the generosity of History for Hire, which is a very big prop house in the style of an early gas station, including two beautiful vintage Richfield Oil Company 1950s gas pumps that are being provided to us by Bill James, who's a local collector up in La Crescenta. So we hope you'll all be there for the event. And if anybody wants more information, you can probably get in touch with the Historical Society, or Google it on the Glendale News Press site, because there is information on the News Press, and also on our Neighborhood Association's Facebook page. So thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you all there. Okay. Since we don't have anything else, and we have no old business, let's go on to new business. The first order, 7A, is 305 West Kenneth Road, a design review application proposing a guesthouse at the contributing property at that address in the Brockmont Park Historic District.
Good evening and thank you. This is an application to construct a new 499-square-foot, detached, one-story guesthouse with a covered patio at the northeast portion of the existing lot located at 305 West Kenneth Road in the Brockmont Park Historic District. The project site is a 51,590-square-foot irregular-shaped lot with frontage on West Kenneth Road, Valley View Road, and Lawson Place. 305 West Kenneth Road was determined to be a contributor to the Brockmont Park Historic District because it was built within the district's period of significance and largely retains its original historic character. The property also appears that it would be eligible for individual listing on the Glendale Register. Originally developed in 1934 in the Mediterranean Revival style, the property is currently developed with a 7,206-square-foot, two-story, single-family house with an attached three-car garage accessed from Valley View Road. The northern portion of the attached garage was added to the property in about 1936. The lot has an uphill slope between West Kenneth Road and Lawson Place with a changing grade of approximately 28 feet. The grade level of the garden spanning the north side of the property is higher than the primary grade of the rest of the property by about eight feet. And that, you can see that in the site section. The upper garden is separated from the southern portion of the lot, which contains the house, the garage, and other gardens by a retaining wall. This area in particular is where the guesthouse is proposed to be located. The proposed hip roof form for the new guesthouse with a 3' and 12" pitch and 2-foot roof overhang is consistent with the Mediterranean Revival style and compatible with the existing house. The new guesthouse will consist of a bedroom, bath, living room, dining area, and a wet bar sink area with a covered patio as well. The design and the materials for the proposed guesthouse are consistent with the Mediterranean Revival style and the existing house. The facade of the guesthouse will be a crushed cashew cement plaster to match the existing texture and color of the main house. The hip roof will be a two-piece clay tile, and the proposed color, Old Sedona blend, is also compatible with that of the existing house. The new gutters and downspouts for the guesthouse will be copper, which matches those of the existing house as well. The exterior doors proposed are wood French doors, and all proposed windows are a combination of single and double wood casement windows. As detailed in the drawings, the windows and doors do have external grids on the glass, and that is also consistent with that of the existing house. This is just a detail of the eve in the wall. You can see the eve detail is similar, is the 2-foot, um, separate, or 2-foot eve detail, and then the window recessed in the wall with the wood still to match. In terms of the proposed building location, the Historic District Design Guidelines call for structures like the proposed guesthouse to be located at the rear of the lot and to be subordinate to the primary structure in terms of mass, size, and height. Due to the change in grade between West Kenneth Road and Lawson Place and the proposed location to the northeast of the lot, the new guesthouse is prominently visible in the context of the main house's front facade. As such, staff is recommending a condition of approval that would require the guesthouse to be relocated to the northwest portion of the lot. By relocating the structure, it would become subordinate to the main house and preserve the context of the main house's primary facade and roof forms. As discussed, due to the change in grade on the property, as viewed from the north, the proposed location of the guesthouse also blocks visibility of the main house and the roof of the garage. Relocating the guesthouse to the northwest portion allows the building to relate better to the surrounding context and remain subordinate to the main house. This will help preserve the sightlines and visual dominance of the existing home. The site plan also shows a walkway that leads towards the perimeter wall at the north of the property. Because the zoning code does not allow a gate to be installed at this wall, because it's in the front setback, staff is also recommending a condition of approval that the walkway either be omitted entirely, or the condition of the existing wall be maintained and no gate installed. Should the applicant wish to include a walkway, a condition's recommended that the new walkway material be permeable and appropriate to the historic character of the property. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
Not at this time.
Well, just one thing. It's a little confusing when you look at that picture there, that the, the height of the, the...
Hedge fence?
Hedge, yeah, exactly. The hedge is, you can see through, but the hedge is actually there. You wouldn't be able to see, the only part of the property you would be able to see is the roof itself.
The house, yeah, the structure, yeah. With the current hedge in place. The current hedge, if, if that ever went away, and I'm not, I think there is a wall behind the hedge?
Yes.
That wall is in the front setback. When you have a property that has two street frontages and is a through-block lot, it actually has two front setbacks. So if this wall were ever removed, the, they wouldn't be able to put it back where it is. So our recommendation will always be to keep this wall here. And so this, this design is just so you wouldn't think that they were trying to hide something, but that you could see it, as you'll experience it from the street, and then what's really there.
I didn't know that the wall's very high. Do you know the height of it? It's like from where the hedge is, where you can see through quite a bit of the hedge.
Yeah, I've assumed it's in the four-foot range, but I haven't, I haven't poked through to measure it, so. You may, a question like that, you may ask the applicant, so.
I have some speaker cards, and for the applicant, I have three of you, Mr. Shakner, the owner, I believe, and Mr. McGinn, and Mr. Simon, so who wants to go first?
Can I actually ask a question really quick? Sorry, Phil, to interrupt. Can I ask a question really quick?
Sure. Okay.
So, I'm just, the, this lot is interesting because it goes through, street to street and all that. The address is Kenneth, but the front of it's on Valley View. For the purposes of something like this, we're considering the front of the house to be the front of the lot? Is that, because the district guideline talks about accessory structures being at the rear of the lot. In the technical sense, this is the rear of the lot, but...
It's a little more confusing here.
Yeah.
Street frontages are based on the narrowest frontage, so we have many houses where the narrow face, the narrow frontage, isn't where the front door is, where the address is, or anything like that. But for our zoning purposes, Kenneth is the street front, Valley View is the street-side setback, and then there's another front setback on Lawson Place.
Okay.
And the main entrance is on Valley View?
On Valley View, yes.
Okay.
But, but you're correct in terms of, how do we use the language of the design guidelines? It is a little funny here, because what, this does feel like the rear yard, but of course, it fronts onto Lawson to some degree.
Okay.
Okay, so who wants to speak first?
I will.
Okay.
I'm Phil Simon.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, I, I can't help but notice from this perspective that the typeface on your nameplate is only half the size of everybody else's.
Thank you. I asked the same question today myself, thank you.
Oh, good, huh?
I was wondering what that meant.
Another indicator.
We're getting all Trumpy here?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know, so as not to wander, I'm, I'm going to talk from prepared notes. Number one, the primary reason for the owner's wish to build the guesthouse is that after 44 years in the home, they want to spend the rest of their lives there. They recognize that they may need assistance and possibly caregivers at some point, and the guesthouse will provide quarters for those helpers. Item number two, the lot size, at almost 52,000 square feet, is ample for the 499-square-foot guesthouse, which will take up less than 1% of the lot, and when added to the square footage of the house, will still be at 14% lot coverage, while under the neighborhood average of 25. Item three, the owner's existing home remains original in the exterior and nearly original on the interior. His professional background is as a European-trained craftsman who established a highly successful business in Glendale as an artisan manufacturer, and he is an expert in spatial layout. The proposed guesthouse has been carefully thought through, both in design and location on the lot, to both complement the existing structure and to enhance the utility of the lot area. Item four, the owner's choice of building location was arrived at after considering both his needs and that of his neighbors. Although the required setback from the Valley View side is 25 feet, he determined that 33 feet would be better placement in order to minimize any negative impact on his neighbors and to comply with any concern on the part of the planning department that the new structure, that it be subordinate to the main house. His method was to set the structure so that the eve lines didn't line up with the house or garage, and to have the roof height staggered, higher than the garage but lower than the house. The rear of the guesthouse is also separated from the garage by 10 feet. Item five, the owner's objection to moving the building to the west is due to two issues. One is that his view from the courtyard to the upper lot orchard area would be eliminated. And if you were to look at the site plan, the area that I'm referring to is from here, which is a courtyard, and offers an unobstructed view all the way up to and past Lawson. And this area currently has mature avocado trees, some mature citrus trees, and a variety of other more recently planted trees to form what he intended to be an orchard. So, his view of the courtyard to the upper lot orchard would be eliminated. The second is that having the structure at the west portion of the lot would leave a largely useless, vacant area behind the garage. And again, if, if you reference the site plan, the area that I just pointed out, or if you look at the area where the, the structure is proposed, that would essentially be a vacant area and couldn't be seen from anywhere on the property. So in conclusion, we feel that with all due respect to the planning department, the owner is uniquely capable and trained to make a decision in this matter, and that his decision should be respected. I did a survey of his neighbors, all the people that were noticed on the radius mailing, and there are 24. I made contact with by mail. Out of those 24 letters that were sent, 12 people responded in favor of the location selected by the owner. And there were no opposing opinions placed whatsoever. So that's 50% of the survey group responding in the affirmative, 0% responding in the negative. And those are all my comments. Do you have any questions for me?
Not at this time. Not right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have Mr. Shakner and Mr. McGinn.
Hi, Michael McGinn. Really, I'm just here to answer questions for you. I, Phil and I went through his presentation. We've had constant communication with the owner. The owner has incredible architectural input. I think we've been able to integrate materials that virtually don't deviate from the original 1934 structure whatsoever. The roof blends great. The, the sash is an extremely close match, and it's been a real enjoyable project to work with him. So, the, I did notice you were speaking about the hedge. The hedge is extremely established. It's three feet thick. I realize in a front setback, you can't ever guarantee the, the maintenance of that. But realistically, with the, with the retaining wall there, and Chris, you asked a question, it varies between three and four feet high. And, and the top of wall is noted on the, on the site plan. Again, to reiterate what Phil said about the avocado trees, they're extremely well-established to the west of the property. So, all things considered, and also something that during a site visit with Jay, he was concerned about the perspective from Kenneth Road. And I walked the site with him, and I said, I asked him, would you, I said, "It's important for us to work with staff." And I said, "So would you help us pick the location of the perspectives that you would like?" And we walked it, and Robert DeRosa did the perspectives from our exact standing point, and actually, we put a thumbnail sketch to Jay. Jay requested that we move the perspective a little bit on the Lawson Street perspective, and we did that. So this is, was totally to represent realistically and also what planning desired. The other thing I would, I would impress is the, if we're trying to mitigate the, the impact from Kenneth Road, which was, again, planning's concern, the value of the angle on, on Valley View is approximately nine degrees. And we have stepped it back from that angle a little bit. That, in, in essence, it was after development with the owner to make it consistent and to make it not look like a, you know, completely consistent facade. They're staggered, the heights are staggered. I think it's architecturally interesting. To Commissioner Morgan's point, the, the hedge was asked to be ghosted by planning, and that's how we represented it. So you're right, it is not a realistic presentation of the way it looks. And I'm sure upon a site visit, you noticed that the temporary frame was pretty, pretty well-mast by the, the surrounding landscape. And beyond that, if you have any questions about the design, again, I think we really have something that is grossly consistent. We can match all the details that Vista talked about virtually identically. And I think it will be a seamless improvement, and really, at the end of the day, you won't be able to tell that it wasn't original. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And we have one more speaker card from the applicants. Did you wish to speak, sir?
Actually, possibly, yes. I want to say something. This whole argument, what we...
Just state your name, Mr. Shakner.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Hello, hello. The discussion we had is basically up to this...
Just say your name out loud, so we...
Oh, my name is Honus Shakner.
There we go.
Okay, and now I can speak, right?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So I have really not too much of a experience with, with formal architecture and such, but this, my whole issue is basically an emotional one. And we lived here for 44 years. We have been the cornerstone of Kenneth Road for the longest time. We have maintained that place better than it was when we acquired it. And right now, we are at an age where both of us going to be 83 years old. We are at an age where we sort of say, "What are we gonna do?" And the next issue is, can we live in a retirement home? No, we can't. And so in order to live a comfortable life, would be to, to do what we are planning, what we, what we planned. And that's basically, and the location is, is really important simply because of the view we have, the ingress and the exit. Everything is sort of been planned out. We, we took close to $5,000 worth of plants out already. Once we had the okay that we're going to be allowed to be building, and so I took three palm trees out, and three other trees, and planned everything, everything to move up, not to move to just be where it's at, and that's about it, really. It's, it's basically, all, all I have to add is the emotional part of it. I certainly don't want to move it from that location, because that seemed like the most ideal. And my neighbor, where the avocado trees are, he is the nicest man, but he said, "My God, you know, what, what, what are they gonna do? You've got so much room. Why do you want to move in on me, actually?" You know, so, it's his opposition, and all the neighbors seem to be in agreement with me that, that it isn't necessary. So that's about the, the total of it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have a card from Francesca Smith.
Good afternoon. I'm Francesca Smith. I'm a qualified architectural historian with 30 years of experience. As you all probably know, I'm speaking as a neighbor, not as a Glendale Historical Society Board member. And I was the neighbor who proposed Brockmont Park Historic District and got it established, which, with much help from planning staff and neighbors. I spoke to lots of neighbors, too. I'm outside of the 500-feet zone. I am absolutely in favor of it as proposed. I spoke with the other neighbors who are outside of the 500-foot radius, and no one, after I explained it on the phone three times, absolutely no one felt that it needed to be moved to the back of the parcel on the Lawson Place side. Today, I had an opportunity to speak to the avocado tree neighbor, Dennis, who lives immediately west of the property, and it is he who would be affected the most by it being moved to where the staff report recommends. And he was absolutely against it being any closer to him, and likes it the way it's proposed with the story poles. We walk our dogs at least twice a day there, and as Jay probably knows, we look very closely at our neighborhood. And it took us, it took us days to notice the story poles, the way that they're just sort of nestled in there. We didn't really notice them, which is unheard of for my husband and me. I also, I, with the staff report, I showed it to my associates at work. There are three qualified architectural historians, each with about 20 years of experience. And, and I tried not to influence them in any way, and each of them said that where it was proposed made the most sense. They couldn't think of preservation reasons to move it to the back of the property as, as is recommended. It's kind of the logical location, because it's a giant L-shaped lot, as you know, with two corners. As it's proposed, it's not really prominently visible. As you see from the top rendering, you can still see the house and garage. Anywhere you put it, I guess, if you're walking, or running, or driving, you know, you'll see a flash of roof that is the new guesthouse, but only for a second. I think even, it's part of our important dog walk every day, and it's, I think it just sort of fits in. I looked at the design guidelines. I looked at the Secretary of the Interior's Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines as it relates to settings, districts, and neighborhoods. I think it's absolutely in scale with what's there now. I think it's absolutely in scale with what's there now. It doesn't, it's not visually incompatible, and it doesn't destroy historic relationships within the setting. The avocado trees are nice, mature landscape features. And it says in the guidelines that removing a historic building, building feature, or landscape feature that is important in defining the character of the setting. Those avocado trees don't define our neighborhood, but the more trees, the better. And it's a very heavily wooded area, as you know. So, I wouldn't really recommend it be moved to the rear, as it were, to the west side of the property. I have plenty more comments, but you guys have a plenty long evening in front of you. And the walkway and the gate, as one of the neighbors on Lawson Place, I don't have a problem with it. If there's a planning and zoning problem, that's, it's up to you guys to negotiate, but it doesn't bother me a bit. And also, the fact that if it were moved to the back of the lot, the owners of the house would see it from the second floor, from the south wing. And I wouldn't want to see my attendants standing there smoking, waiting to hear what to do next. I think it's, the way it's proposed is the best way. And my neighbors seem to agree, so thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
There's a pencil here of someone's.
So, do we close the public hearing now and talk?
There's a rebuttal.
Is there another speaker?
Can I just add something to what I said before?
You're allowed to rebut, and even if it's a positive rebuttal, that's okay. So, if you want to ask him to come up again, that's fine.
Sure. Come on up.
Come on.
Simply in support of the notion that the...
Could you please stand by the microphone and...
State your name again.
You have to say who you are.
Speaking in positive rebuttal.
Phil, say your name.
Yeah, what's your name?
We have these very odd rules.
Phil Simon.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, positive rebuttal. This is a map of the radius survey. May I approach?
You have to stay near the microphone if you're speaking.
They record it. That's the only reason why.
As you can see...
We have that drawing, so we all have it, yeah.
We have it right there.
We have it.
Okay, great. And so, in yellow on mine, these are the people that responded in the affirmative. And I'd be happy to have you pass this around if you'd like, but you can see that they're all the contiguous neighbors. So, these would be the people most affected by the property being located where it is. Nevertheless, they feel that that's the right location for it. So, end of rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you say your name again.
Okay, public hearing is closed, and we can begin with comments from commissioners. So, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
I had the privilege of going there and meeting Mr. Simon and Hanas Schlochner. And it was, and I really liked the fact that they put up the actual, whatever you call it.
Story poles?
It was more than story poles. Temporary frame. I agree with Francesca Smith that it's definitely where it should be. I mean, having gone around and looked at it from all the different angles, it just seemed to be there. I've written some notes, and I can read a few of them. It says, "With constructing the actual temporary frame of this guest house, it actually showed the scale of this guest house in relation to the main house and the adjacent garage." "We all agree that the architectural concept of the proposed guest house is consistent with the design of the main house." "The guest house is only 499 square feet, and when actually viewed in totality, is very, very small. I have to disagree with the staff on its condition of approval." "The guest house is appropriate," which I agree with Francesca Smith again, "where the applicant has placed on Lot Number Nine. Had the applicant not owned so many lots, such as Lot 10 and Lot 9, was and is the correct placement. Lot 10 is vacant, and with some trees and standing on Lot 10, you can see clear from Lawson Place almost to Kenneth. Moving the guest house to Lot 10 would break up that clear field of view. I don't think that would be in the best intention of the Brockmont Park Historic District." "I don't agree with staff's assessment that the location of the guest house on the northeast of the lot, that it would be prominently visible in context of the main house's front facade and will also block some visibility of the main house. It just doesn't do that. This guest house, due to its diminutive size, barely even registers on the northeast lot, as where the applicant wants to put it. With all of its setbacks, the placement on the northeast portion of Lot 9, where it is, is where it is, understood as a subordinate structure and will not be visible in the context of the main house's primarily facade and roof formers. I vote to leave it where it is."
Any other comments about anything else, or is it...
I'm good. Well, I only have the gate. You know, that would have to be a variance, I guess, if they were to put a gate. I don't see any problem with it, and Ms. Smith didn't see a problem with it, so...
The gate's not allowed. It would have to be variance.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to support that variance. It's unlikely it would be granted. So, we addressed our comments just to the walkway, which seemed to be a hangover from the time when the gate was proposed. I think the gate isn't part of the current proposal.
Right, so I'm not, neither way, yea or nay on.
Okay. Who's next?
Some comments. Comments and questions. Jay, can I start first with code questions regarding the floor plan? So, could you talk a little bit to the commission about a guest house and whether it can or cannot have a kitchen? And what defines kitchen versus service bar?
Ultimately, the kitchen is defined by the stove. We routinely approve guest houses that have a bathroom, have a sink outside of the bathroom, which would serve as a place where you might do dishes. We recognize that guest houses might have a microwave oven or something. The goal is to not have second residential units on the site, to have a guest house that is subordinate, not just in appearance, but also use. The idea being that the person who uses the guest house is typically often using the house as well. And, but ultimately, it comes down to the stove. Vista may have better insight into the code.
Right, so based off the definitions in the zoning code, once cooking facilities are added, it's no longer considered a guest house. That's typically just the threshold that we would look at, just like Jay mentioned. Once someone shows a stove in the drawing, it becomes a second dwelling unit at that point, which would not be permitted in the zone.
If we saw a guest stove framing inspection, we would stop that.
And typically, just in the plan check process, we're pretty consistent about, on the plans, making notations that, you know, no cooking facilities permitted, not to be rented out, just items on the plans to mitigate any kind of impacts that may or may not happen in the future.
And that said, if after approval, a guest house does turn into a rental unit, we ultimately would rely on reports from neighbors, and then our Neighborhood Services team would investigate that, and we would go forward with the prosecution if we needed to.
Yeah, I just noticed in the plans, there's a nice, long wall there across from the sink counter with nothing shown, and I was just...
Yeah, that's typical for this kind of application.
Okay. My other comments are, I have some design comments. You know, the house is beautiful. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to come visit this past weekend, but the house is beautiful. And I think part of this architectural style is the varying sizes and treatments to windows. And the house has very many different shapes, some with shutters, some with iron. Many of them are more vertical than horizontal in kind of an elegant streamlined effect. And as I look at the guest house, it's definitely not as reminiscent of the beautiful variation of window types and styles. And I would just encourage maybe staff to work with the architect to bring a little more style and interest. You can show the front facade picture of the main house as you didn't see what I was speaking of. You know, most of the window panes are, again, at the vertical proportion instead of longer horizontal, as shown. And so, I just think there could be some improvements made to the design there. And then I had a question. Do you know if the covered patio area columns, are those matching the back part of the house?
That was the goal of the designer, was to take that motif. I think they scaled it down a little to reflect the change in scale.
It looked like it, but I couldn't really tell from the drawings. I think that's appropriate. A couple more comments. Regarding the location of it, I do agree with staff that it should be relocated to the rear. Because, again, I think having a guest house this prominent to the street takes away from the front facade, and it takes away from the beautiful architecture style of the house being the main element on our front scene from the street. And I think it's beautiful to see from your backyard estate architecture at the back. I don't see a problem with it blocking gardens. You have so many gardens, and I think the design of this guest house could be just as beautiful and a beautiful feature to tie into the garden setting. And I think as it is now with the elevation rising to Lawson, that it appears higher, larger in mass and scale than it should as a guest house. And so, I agree, concur with staff that it should be relocated to the rear. I think those are my main...
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I think I'm going to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Morgan. The design guidelines state that accessory structures should be subordinate to the primary historic structure in terms of mass, size, and height, which was just noted. I think this structure on its own achieves that. Again, we're just, I think we're dealing with the fact here that we have a huge change in slope on the property. And I also do appreciate, as was stated by the applicant, that when we're looking at the rendering, you know, the roof line is higher than the garage from this particular perspective. And that's really just one perspective, but it also remains lower than the house. And I think if one were to stand in front of the home and be asked, "Which building is the important building?", I don't think someone would point to the guest house. That's just the sense. That's my sense. I have a few more notes here. You know, and just want to comment in terms of the, in terms of the argument about the neighbor. And I don't know if there's any intention here at all. I recognize that we're looking at five separate parcels. And I would imagine at some point in time that, you know, the property could be subdivided. And so, it makes sense to keep the guest house on Parcel Number Nine. But also, thinking in terms of that, at some future point, the neighbors' argument that they don't want a guest house real close to their home or to remove the avocado trees, that could potentially happen at some future point in time. And I'm just making sort of a looking to the future. Certainly, a home, a residence, could be built there at some point in time. That's the flip side of the argument. So, for me, I think I'm comfortable with the placement. I do think at 499 square feet, it will always be subordinate to the main house, except for siding from certain angles. That's just where I stand right now. I look forward to hearing from my colleague. I am.
Okay, well, I'm going to speak in support of its present location. I think that this structure is, you can look at the structure from any angle, and it will always have maybe an imposing, will look imposing or not subordinate to the other structure. If you're looking at it from the far west, as you're coming from the west, and you see it at the back of the property, it's going to be the first thing you see. So, I just, I don't know, I think it's kind of, it feels like it's sort of splitting hairs, in a way. And I think it would be kind of a loss if they had to remove those avocado trees. I have a big avocado tree in my backyard, and it's such a statement. And it really is, while it may not be a part of the fabric of the actual street, avocado trees are a very distinguished tree in the state. And I think they're a really kind of interesting part of the history of our city. I think mine was probably part of an avocado grove at some point, you know? And I think it's important to maintain as much of that as we can. And seeing no opposition here from neighbors that are concerned about their view and all of that, I think it's a beautiful design. It's obviously been well thought out. I don't think it should be, I don't think that it needs to be moved. I think it's just fine where it is.
And then if I can interject on the issue of the avocado tree. As an unprotected tree in the city of Glendale, the commission should not be basing any of its decision-making on saving the avocado trees. So, depending on which way you vote, if you could please frame, and I'll help you frame, your finding to not include that.
Okay.
So, it's not an argument we can make here unless it were identified in the Historic District report or in a Glendale Register report if this were an individual property designated individually. So, just a general note there.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. I'm sorry I didn't get to visit the house either. I was not available during the time, but I did go to the house. I circled it where I could, took pictures. And I was very impressed by the design and the thought and care that went into, you know, the rendering of the home. And I do agree with my colleague about the windows. But then, I noticed, you know, they have kind of a more post-war shape to them, I guess you could say. But the question then arises, we always talk about, you know, being compatible, but yet differentiating. You know, it's almost become, I think it is maybe even stated in the guidelines somewhere, maybe not in relationship to guest houses, but that differentiation of some sort is supposed to be made. Now, that's for additions, and I don't know if the same principle applies to guest houses with, in terms of, you know, syncing your design with a historic building or with a period building, that you don't want to mimic it and create the look of something that might be misconstrued as being the same age as the main property. So, what is the position there? I mean, what's the, you know, the philosophy on that?
Guest houses aren't specifically addressed. You're right. We think of them as additions. We think of them as part of a larger property. With something on a small building like this for such a simple structure, I don't think the window pattern one way or the other. You know, we thought this proposed pattern was appropriate, but I see Commissioner Shire's point. And I wouldn't see a problem if there was some change in some of the forms. Often, just in general, design review, when we see a series of paired casement windows, we often find that in some cases, just to provide a little bit of a change in pattern, you might split that into two separate window openings with stucco between them in one location, maybe another. Sometimes that's enough to provide some variety. And you can see on the house that there's so many types there. I think that might be an appropriate way to make this distinction. But I don't think in terms of thinking about the standards and distinguishing this, it's very nature as a guest house at this scale clearly separates it from the main house. So, it's almost more just finessing the design would be, I think, the basis for your decision.
Okay, well, I guess if the architect and the owner are amenable to looking at that as, you know, a potential modification, but...
Ultimately, they'll do what you say if you make it a condition, so...
See? All right. Well, I think it's worth looking at because it is, as Commissioner Shire said, such a big, grand house. And the guest house is going to be visible. Maybe not now, but, you know, it is in a visible position without the hedges in the wall. So, we're looking at it from that perspective. So, it probably would be worthwhile to try to reshape the windows in such a way that they are more longitudinal.
No, you may not. I'm sorry. In this official world we're living in, the commission is discussing, so... We can talk afterwards. We can talk afterwards.
It's the first time I ever been in such a situation.
Well, that's okay. I mean, there's going to be discussion and there's going to be a vote and, you know, all these things will be reflected in the motion that's made, so.
If, if the chair, I maybe spoke too harshly there. The commi, the chair may open the public hearing again if you feel there's a reasonable need to take further public testimony.
Well, if you, if you want to make a rebuttal on that opinion, I would be happy to hear you. So I would open them.
No, not a rebuttal.
Or, or a comment. I'm going to open the public hearing so you can speak.
Hannes, come to the microphone so you're recorded.
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yes. To put this whole, Hannes Schachtner is my name, to put this whole thing in one of those houses that are drast houses that basically cannot be altered whatsoever, not only like a, like a national or a city, what you could call that, a heritage house or something like that. And then you couldn't subdivide it at all. We as homeowners at this moment, we would abhor the idea of subdividing it or the next buyer to subdivide it. That would be part of the contract practically, that it stays. I mean, it's been our home and we are more than attached. We live in Glendale now for sixty-some-odd years and that was our second house we were lucky to acquire. And the previous owners, they were well-to-do people and they build a great house and we maintained it that way. We had no, no repairs at all, not in forty years. Not one, not electric, we put the fuse boxes and such, but otherwise it's been a great house and it should remain, remain a great house. It should be not just forgotten and.
Yeah. And we're, we're not, and I wasn't suggesting that we make changes in the house.
No, 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 but I'm saying you can put it into a historical subdivision, so to speak, by saying, well, this is a historic house by itself, like, like one of the, one of the ones you mentioned, you know? So that would be fine with me because I, I'm only looking towards my own lifetime. I have no, no further interests in, in, in that. I mean, but at the same time, I would like to say, my kids can say, oh, my dad owned that and he, he passed it on to the society. I don't know what, you know, I don't really know. So but the, the house, the way we planned it is what I really like to see to take place, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to address some of the lines.
No.
Well, no.
I can specifically address many of the things that you said.
It's not how we work with the Design Review Board.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we're in a special situation here and we will continue to discuss it and, you know, we'll see where we end up. But I think, you know, some of the, some of the people on the dice here have one opinion, some have another, and ultimately this will be put to a vote. So, you know, I'm not talking about changing the house in my comments at all, and I'm not talking about any specific thing where I want the guest house to look more like the original house or less like it. I'm just talking about the principle of whether or not the windows, the way we look at historic preservation should be modified. And it's more of a compatibility thing, that there's some discordance there between the two shapes of windows. I, I happen to agree with my colleague, Commissioner Shire, on that. The next thing is, I also agree that I think the property, the, the guest house should be relocated, so I would agree with staff's position on that for the reasons that have already been stated in the report. So.
Could I add one more comment? I think in even trying to preserve a large lot, an estate of this size in Glendale for history, moving the guest house to the rear would only help preserve and protect, if we're looking at this from an historic preservation standpoint, rather than giving an opportunity for future subdevelopment. I mean, so my, my basis was not made on that. That doesn't really, you know, come into purview, but back to why really I think the house should be relocated to the back is because it currently competes with the front facade. Whether it'll always be subordinate in square footage or subordinate in look or style, it still is a competing structure. That would be much more elegant solution, I think, if it was moved to the back, celebrated with the gardens and then maintained as a large estate as this property is and is a rare one in Glendale.
So could we discuss the definition of compete? What, what is the, what is, what is the definition of competing? Because clearly, again, we're only looking at one rendering from one particular vantage point in this rendering. I think in the pictures that we have in our packet and just from visiting the site, I don't believe if you're standing at the corner of Kenneth and Valley View that you're even going to see that perspective. And then again, it depends on if you're standing at the northeast corner or the northwest corner. I think because we're on a corner lot, it's always going to be visible from some vantage So when we talk about interfering with roof lines and not appearing subordinate to the house, I find it subordinate.
I do too.
I, I can't imagine that we would, you know, and I don't know where that, that, that standard, it's, it's a guideline. It's our Glendale guideline. And then I don't know what the standards say. But I would imagine we're talking about probably if we were dealing, if all things were, I mean, if we were dealing with a completely flat lot and then you put a guest house on it that were taller and we're only going to, because we're talking about a guest house, we're only going to talk about height. We're not really going to talk about mass and scale, right? Then it would truly overpower the main home. I would have an issue if that structure in height were going to be taller, built higher in structure than the actual home.
Well, it is in elevation.
It is not.
It is absolutely higher in elevation. And the mass is appearing higher and more massive than it should had it been removed, a little bit of space and separation to the rear of the lot. And we can't, we can't ignore the, also the guidelines that says to be located at the rear of the lot.
When feasible.
The lot is west.
I mean, and I'm, in this case, we could argue it could be feasible because the space is there. Again, in my personal opinion, I'm not having an issue with a 499 square foot guest house being located on the same parcel as the home and garage reside. I just don't see it as not subordinate.
Are we done with discussion?
Yeah. Why don't we have a motion?
Well, before we make the motion, let's determine first if there's concurrence about the windows, which is really the only other issue that we've discussed. If there is concurrence on the windows, we'll, we'll read that back to you as a condition. And, and then the, the motion can be either to support the proposal as proposed or to support the staff recommendation to move it to the west. So determine if there's concurrence on the windows and then take a motion.
Yeah, can you read back for the windows?
The way we would look at the windows is to revise the window pattern on the guest house to better reflect the variety of window opening sizes and placement as seen at the main house and be more compatible with, with that pattern, something like that.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
My only concern about that is that this is not a very big structure and I'm afraid that if we start, I mean, when we're looking at this, we've got a massive frontage of house with the opportunity to really do some interesting and varying things. I'm afraid that there's really only one side where you have more than two windows, that if we suddenly are asking them to create a varying amount of window shapes and sizes, it, more than anything, would just maybe draw more attention to itself than perhaps is appropriate. And I don't know, it feels like this is nice and simple and basic and if we start to, if we ask them to then start changing things up to look more like that, I think that would be a challenge.
I don't think, I don't think that would happen.
Well, obviously not, but if we're going to have, I mean, how, I guess the question is are we talking about three different windows on the side or I guess that, we probably should really narrow that down.
And, and the Design Review Board hears this sort of thing very regularly and HPC doesn't as often. So there is, we, we take the, the, the philosophy of your recommendation and then we work with the applicant after the hearing if you were to approve it with that condition and we come up with something. Listening to Commissioner Shire's thought, I would probably look for one or two locations, at least looking at elevation that we're looking at, the upper elevation in the rendering, possibly take the closer pair of double leaf casements and possibly separate those into single leaf. I think that's the entry area into the, into the space, if I remember correctly. It would be a subtle change like that. It wouldn't be suddenly having four different window sizes at different heights with different sill heights and, and opening sizes. It would be a subtle change. But your point's also clear, it is a simple design with a simple window pattern right now, so.
It's just enough to give it some more character and I think elegance. This is very boxy and square compared to that beautiful elegant facade. And I know the scales are, are very different, but you can still achieve the same thing with variation in size, shape, location. So it's not so cookie cutter punching the same window shape on the facade. So come, I'm sorry if I may.
That comes back to me for the same question of when we're adding that we want to differentiate. And I think you said just finessing, so I'm, I'm somewhat indifferent. I think that would be a recommendation for staff to work with the architect? Is, or are we going to put a condition?
You have, again, this is kind of a new process to some degree. We have two, two options for you when you're asking for something beyond the proposal. You can make a condition, which means that the applicant has to follow your condition and staff will review that, make sure it follows the intent of your goals. And so we work together, but it never comes back to the commission. There's also something called a consideration, which is where very often board members at the Design Review Board feel not so strongly about something, but something, why don't you think about this? Why don't you see if this works for you? In reality, considerations are generally, we considered it and we decided not to do it. That's how it usually happens. So it really depends on how strongly the commission feels about this. If it's, if it's an issue that you want to see in reality, once this is built, you would make it a condition. If it's something you're indifferent, one way or the other, doesn't really matter, you might ask for it to be a consideration and you have to let us know. We, we treat it differently, so.
I would propose it's a condition. I think the architecture style will be enhanced dramatically for the structure by relooking at, adding a little more variance.
And then would yours suggest, do you have suggestions, Jay, suggesting maybe splitting the two in the front? Would you have a different thought, like a vision that you might have or?
I would need to take sketch paper and work with it, but I leave it to the architect. It's not our job here. I trust staff to work with the architect. The architect will, I'm sure is very talented and can take a look at, at the existing facade currently and make a.
And we also take into account with window placement, we recognize when you look at a bedroom, there's a likely location where the bed's going to go. We, we think about those things as we work around the, the different facades and try to come up with something that makes sense.
For me, I'm a consideration.
Only that, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it being a, a condition. I'm happy to have it be a consideration, as Jay mentioned, and they can work with staff. If Mike has some ideas about that, I'm okay with. I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable saying absolutely have to do that. Then is it one window, is it four windows? Is it, no. I think it's probably better that we just leave it up to staff and the architect at that point.
Well, with the condition, it doesn't specify quantity. It allows the staff to work with owner and architect to come to an agreement. So it's not as rigid as you may think by just the word condition versus consideration.
It sounds like.
It gives a lot of flexibility within just making for that change to happen.
The condition, like I said, would be written something along the lines of revise the window pattern on the guest house to better reflect the variety of window openings on the main house. Speaking here, everyone's hearing it, looking at this with the limited number of windows plus the internal configuration issues that would arise, I don't see it being more than one or two windows that would actually change based on the, the condition if it becomes one.
But that same thing could be done as a consideration also.
Exactly. If, if the commission was less inclined to see it reflected in the built condition, there's a good cha, you have to know when you make a consideration that there's a very good chance it won't be considered, very beyond words saying we considered it, so. Which is, which the board does regularly and we, we know that it's not always going to go anywhere. Sometimes, working with applicants over time after a hearing, they may take into consideration things. They do get applied sometimes.
And a lot of the windows on the, on the main house are casement windows with divided lights, if I remember correctly.
I think most, if not all.
And, you know, whether or not, you know, to change the style of these windows so that there are divided lights might work.
Yeah, no.
Longitudinally divided lights. I mean, they're too small.
Yeah, to maintain compatibility, we would keep divided lights here. As you know, on different styles, you sometimes have the individual lights, the panes of glass are sometimes horizontally oriented or vertically oriented. We could look more closely at the house and make sure that that's reflected. That also is a function of how wide and how tall window openings are, so those, that could be adjusted too. There would, a condition would leave staff a lot of latitude to work with the designer and the owner to find a solution that works for them that also, in our world, meets the intent of a condition. So we, we generally craft them, we write them so that they're broad enough to give some room unless, unless the board or the commission is very, very specific about something. We try to go toward the broader side for conditions. We encourage the Design Review Board to rarely speak in terms of reduce something by X number of feet or inches because that really constrains our ability to work with applicants after the hearing.
Madam Chair, may we ask the architect for a?
An opinion?
An opinion?
Yes. I'd like to open the public hearing and hear from the architect.
Michael McGinn, thank you very much. To Chris's point, we have to look at accessory structure and the scale of it. The ordinance is specific that you cannot exceed fifteen feet in height. We have a three and twelve roof here. We tried to make it subordinate to, and we feel like we've achieved it. So when you do this, you end up with a plate height of eight foot six, and this addresses what Chris was talking about. We don't have the latitude as in the main house because we don't have the vertical element. So we did work with staff on these windows already and we addressed their concerns. We changed the, the configuration of two of the windows facing Lawson. Also, if you look at the, the, if you look at all of the photographs of the property, you'll find that the, the grid placement is grossly consistent with many of the existing windows. The, so again, we've got an eight foot six plate height. You're talking about a dwelling that has a plate height in excess of ten feet. So we don't have the latitude to do a lot of the things that was, was done in the original structure. Also, again, the two windows that we changed in working with staff are the, the furthest projection toward Lawson and the one within the patio. And that was to, to give greater margins on the side and to create a more vertical element. The thing I, I would be really reluctant to do is integrate shutters in here. Because of the scale of the structure being. Because of the scale of the structure being so much smaller, if you take that window and we put shutters on it, it's gonna take up the whole, whole elevation of that plane. And to me, that wouldn't be consistent at all with the existing house. We, you know, they're also in a small structure. You need to be very considerate of how it's gonna be furnished. These sill heights are approximately 30 inches off the floor, which is what we do, you know, all the time. These lots are probably about 32. And it's, it's a 6'8" height. So when we only have an 8'6" plate height, we don't have a lot of latitude within that. We can't go to a, we can't go to an eight-foot-high window, an eight-foot header height because we're limited by the accessory structure and the fact that, you know, the structure is so subservient to the main house. So again, we're trying to, we're trying to make it complement the main house by being a lesser element of the main house.
It isn't the main house.
It isn't the main house. That's exactly right.
It's new.
And if you look at the different elevations, you know, the, the, the windows are varied in size. So, and I took somewhat of an exception to it, having a boxy look. We have a tremendous amount of offsets and we have a covered porch. We have, you know, we have rafter details that were totally consistent with the existing. The porch is very interesting. The, the front door access offers a lot of interest by being able to walk into a covered area. So we worked very hard at making it interesting and also be within the constraints of 499 square foot structure. And you, when you lay out something that's functional, I mean, you're talking about an inch or two move and stuff to make it work, to make the bathroom work, to, you know, to make the bedroom work, to make the closets work, you know, to make an adequate living area that you can actually put furniture in. Because that's, that's our limit. The other thing I would say is that if you notice the plot plan, these lots are tied together. So the likelihood of future development is really nil. And that would be, I mean, Jay could give his opinion about that, but they were tied together and you'll see the, you can see the, it was done with the original structure and it was done after the subdivision was completed. So they were tied together to do the original structure. So the, even the mutton detail on the windows, we're, we're able to achieve the same mutton detail as, as the original house.
The recessing's the same, the mutton.
Right. And the muttons, the actual configuration of the mutton is gonna be the same. The sill is the same water table that was used on the, on the existing house.
Materials are wood.
Yeah. And these are wood windows. These are painted wood windows. So I know that, that, the historic committee allows a vinyl replacement sometime and, and we weren't interested in going there. This is a gelled-wind product. It's a phenomenal product. And again, it achieves the same sill, mutton, division detail to, to much of the house within the eight foot six plate height.
I think you gave us a, a very comprehensive explanation. Thank you for the clarification. We appreciate it. I think I'm, I'm kind of mixed on this because of the whole differentiation issue, actually. You know, I don't see this as, this isn't the house. This is another house. So I would be willing to go with a consideration on it as well.
Want to read it?
Okay, well, then if that's the, I hear four for the consideration, one for the condition, probably someone, well, we could entertain two different motions.
Do you want to make a motion?
Your best.
You don't have one written out for us.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve this, or that we recommend a city count, are we recommending or no?
No, this is a binding.
Just approval of the project with conditions as stated in the staff report and the addition of working with the window slight revision for variety in style to more, be more reflective of the elegance of the main house.
Do we have a second? Motion has expired. Should we have a second motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the project. Yeah, okay, so.
Approve the project as proposed.
With the condition that.
Consideration of the window change.
You know, we didn't, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of a motion, but I don't think we really decided what we wanted to do about the walkway. So I will just, I will just make the motion to, with the, to approve the project with the condition that the drawings are modified to either delete the walkway leading to the north perimeter wall, or if the walkway is still desired, indicate that the existing perimeter condition will be maintained and then no gate will be installed. And that the paving material for the new walkway, if it remains part of the project, shall be permeable and of a material and design appropriate to the historic character of the property. And that as a consideration, staff work with the architect regarding possible changes to the windows.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Not used to this, so I have to. Commissioner Shire? Commissioner Vartanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardinanti?
Yes.
And Commissioner, Chair Vidor?
No.
Motion passes three to two. Motion being that the project is approved with the staff condition to delete the walkway or alter the walkway, adding the consideration to revise the windows with the guest house in the proposed location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voila.
Thank you very much.
I saw you exhale.
It's my home. It is his home. It's a good home.
I'm always against the word guest house because it is not a guest house. I hate the word.
Okay. We, we, we have another agenda item we have to get to, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
We really appreciate your time. And we're looking at 7B 1500 Flower Avenue. This is a Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act application.
Anyone catch what time it was when we started?
It was about 20 after 5:00.
Officially 20.
And I would say so.
5:20. Okay, good. It's hard not having staff to take care of this stuff. Interesting question.
Okay. We're on to the next agenda item, so we can go ahead with your presentation. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. We have a brand-new Glendale Register nomination for your consideration today. 1500 Flower Street is an art deco industrial building located at the corner of Sonora and Flower in the Grand Central neighborhood. So it's recently undergone some major rehabilitation work and it's been adapted for reuse as a creative office space. So 1500 Flower was built as the Irving Airshoot Factory in 1929 as part of a larger build-out of the Grand Central Airport complex, which had started off as a small private airstrip, but by this time in the 1920s was growing into an important regional industrial hub. So the Glendale plant was this, was the company's second after its headquarters in Buffalo. So the founder of the Irving Airshoot Factory, or company, was Leslie Irvin. He founded the company in 1918. He was from Los Angeles. He was a former stuntman and kind of the stairdoubled type. His nickname was Sky High Irvin. So he made a, kind of a name for himself doing these free jumps from airplanes. And so it caught the attention of the U.S. Army Air Service, who, they were interested in developing kind of a improved parachute. And so they got together a team, like a, sort of an R&amp;D team, that included Mr. Irvin. So they got together and made sort of these key, a couple of key innovations to the parachute that we still recognize today, including the manual ripcord. So according to some accounts, Irvin wasn't necessarily like the guy who was leading the development necessarily, but he was really good at promotion and really good at sort of like the business end of things. And so he incorporated the company first. And some people say that's why there's that discrepancy between the, his name and the company's name. So in any event, the company took off quickly and it flourished into the 1920s and 30s and 40s. Actually, I kind of want to point this out. So this is sort of the process of manufacturing the, the parachutes, but it's also them, I guess, airing out the material. The silk would kind of get, I guess, maybe mildewy or something if not properly aired out this way. Okay, so this is the original headquarters in Buffalo and just a little bit of promotional material. Okay, so this brings us back to the building of 1500 Flower. So it's a basically utilitarian building, but with art deco influences. The architect, Henry Gogarty, was known for his industrial designs and went on to have a pretty impressive body of work, including the Hercules Complex in Playa Vista, which you all likely know is home to the Spruce Goose and was recently leased by Google. So the original portion of the building is clad.
Grand Central.
Oh, yeah. All right, we'll talk. Jay would like me to mention that Gogarty was also the architect of Grand Central.
Air Terminal.
Air Terminal, yes, which I believe is GR number 19.
So.
Yes. Okay, so the original portion of the building is clad with red brick and inset with decorative art deco elements. Fenestration throughout the building consists mostly of slightly recessed four-by-four vertical steel casement and hopper windows that are separated by brick pilasters with ornamental caps. So the main entrance, which is intact but no longer in use, is an elevated portal incorporating step brick and a cast concrete panel, which kind of creates sort of a zigzag modern effect. So the southwest facade has a large 1959 stucco clad addition that largely obscures the original brick cladding. While the addition is significant visually and materially, it's differentiated from the original structure. These are some views of the Sonora side facade. It's less articulated, but very similar to the primary facade. And here you also get a sense of the upper volume, which contains the mezzanine and was built double-height in order to hang out and air those parachutes. Some of the early news reports claim that the roof was supposed to resemble like an open parachute, but.
Folded.
A folded parachute. Okay, well, which seemed to me kind of like a breach because it really just kind of looks like a regular industrial model roof to me. So other alterations include all of the entry doors, which have been replaced with just contemporary metal, fully glazed. There's some new HVAC equipment. And the sign is something that I wanted to touch upon. We saw the early photos, or the earliest photos of the building and the sign was not present, but it does date to the building's period of significance and therefore should be considered a, a character-defining feature. Overall, the building retains a high degree of design and material integrity and is eligible for listing on the Glendale Register as an excellent example of art deco-influenced utilitarian architecture and as an intact example of a 1920s industrial building. Additionally, staff found 1500 Flower Street eligible under criterion one for its association with Glendale's aviation and military defense industry. As mentioned previously, Grand Central Air Terminal played a significant role in the development of the city's early industrial history, attracting aviation-related businesses like Irving Airshoot. 1500 Flower Street is one of the very few physical remnants of this aspect of the city's And as such, staff recommends to the Historic Preservation Commission that 1500 Flower Street be added to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources as the Irving Airshoot Company and also to authorize a Mills Act contract between the property owner and the
Is that it?
It is indeed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? This is Park. Okay. Then, yes, you do?
No.
No? Okay. Then let's go to the first speaker, the owner, Weston Cookler.
Hello, my name is Weston Cookler. I just wanted to thank the commissioners. I enjoyed touring the building. I enjoyed talking about the building's history, learning from you also kind of how the history fit in with the broader scope of preservation and adaptive reuse in Glendale. And just to kind of emphasize my message that there's a, a big movement now to find these properties and, and create a new use for them to preserve the history. And it's, I very much appreciated the encouragement. I wanted to thank Jay and Christina for doing the work to support the report, to do the report. I'm glad that they had excitement and interest in this project and, and I appreciated that. I wanted to thank the, the architect, Henry Gogarty, because he made a building that was not just defined by its efficiency, but also by its style for, you know, when it didn't need to be. I wanted to thank the Irving Airshoot Company for being a historic part of Glendale's history, for making a product that literally saved lives, both in, in World War I and in World War II again. And I wanted to thank my tenant, Tim and Eric Company, which is a Hollywood production company that moved here and saw the value of being in a historic building and didn't mind that the sign on the side of the building didn't have their name on it. They thought it added a level of authenticity and that's what they valued in their workspace. And I'm just happy to be a part of the building's history. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Yurka?
Good evening. My name's Kathy Yurka and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society. We're very thrilled that the Irving Airshoot Company is coming before the commission for designation. We, this building first came to our attention a few years ago when a member emailed us very concerned because he drove by this building every day and noticed that it was under construction. And he, we were able to find out a few things. One was that, yes, indeed, several permits had been listed. We also found out that it was on the California Register. I'm pretty sure it's on the register. It may have only been found eligible, but I believe it's, it's actually on the register. And we also found out that the city was not aware of this fact. So alarm bells went off, but fortunately, the building was in such excellent hands. This is a model for how the restoration of a historic resource should be handled. And all I can say is that we hope that Weston Cookler will purchase many more commercial historic properties in Glendale and give them the same treatment that he gave the Irving Airshoot Company. So we strongly urge you to, to find this, to list this on the Glendale Register and extend a Mills Act contract to Mr. Cookler. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is closed and we can go right to any comments or discussion items the commission wants to contribute. Anyone?
Okay. It's a great building. The building retains a high degree of design and material integrity and is an excellent example of. example of adaptive reuse of a historic industrial building. Its association with Henry Gogarty, who also designed GCAT or GR number 19, one-year prior, is a great association. It shows some of the stuff that he did in Glendale, and I am for its inclusion most enthusiastically on the Glendale Register.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will also enthusiastically support the nomination to the Glendale Register. As noted in the staff report, 1500 Flower Street is an excellent and rare example of a 1920s brick industrial building in Glendale, and we did unfortunately lose a rare mission revival brick commercial building a few years ago, and we have very few of these. And I also thank you, the owner, for your thoughtful restoration of the property, and also appreciate that you're bringing in tenants that also appreciate the history and what you've done. So, thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure for you to bring this building before us today. Unfortunately, I didn't make the tour, but I've heard nothing but positive things about you, the owner, and this building from my colleagues and commissioners. And took the opportunity to go by the property and park and walk by and look at it and some beautiful details. In fact, in this brick building with the Art Deco flair, it was just gorgeous. So I would definitely support this and agree with staff. The only thing, just for consideration, I know you're taking very good care of the building, the only thing that popped out at me is the modern-style doors in that building that, you know, if you need to replace them at some point, maybe there would be a more elegant solution there. But that's just a comment for you to think about long-term. But, yeah, I would definitely support this.
I agree. I also support the historic designation and the Mills Act contract. It was fun to walk around the building, and I remember a couple of meetings ago, maybe it was even just one meeting ago, when we were learning all of the state guidelines and everything. And this building has an annex, and I thought it was great that the annex was full of windows, and you could see through the windows, and you could see the original exterior wall of the building. And it wasn't like they had knocked down that wall to create this annex. It was really done in a way that keeps, and I don't know if it was on purpose, but back when they did it, but it's great. So you really can actually see the whole building if you take the time to stop and really look through the glass and see it all there. But anyway, yes, I think it's a great, what you've done is great. Many more to come, I hope. So congratulations on your efforts.
Thank you. Yeah, I, it almost makes me emotional. The last item on the agenda had a lot of emotion attached to it, and after going through the building inside and out with Mr. Cookler, I have to admit that, and I'll be very honest with anybody who's listening, including the people in the room, that I actually vented quite a bit on Mr. Cookler about how I see some of the institutional and commercial development and lack of sensitivity to adaptive reuse and restoration in Glendale, and how much of a pleasure and relief it was to see that there was somebody on the scene looking to do more work in Glendale, including the beautiful work that you've done on this building, and really gets it and feels enthusiastic. And sometimes I feel a little bit down about things, but talking to you and seeing your building and seeing the way it looked inside and out really made me feel a lot better, and it really inspired and encouraged me. So I really thank you for what you've done. I think having stewards for buildings like this is extremely important, and, you know, my passion is institutional commercial landmarks. That's why I want to be on this commission, so when something like this happens, I'm like just overwhelmed with relief. So congratulations to you, and I hope that you will stick around and do more things here in our lovely jewel city. So I'm with the program, too.
Yes, and thank you for expressing all that hope for the future in your generation of architects and developers.
Right. I think we're ready for a motion, unless anybody has anything else to add.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we recommend to City Council the property at 1500 Flower Street be called the Irving Air Shoot Company and be designated as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources, based on staff's findings, and that also we recommend to City Council to authorize the Mills Act contract.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgan?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Commissioner Kurgnati?
Yes.
Commissioner Vartanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Shire?
Yes.
Chair Vidor?
Yes.
Five-zero, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you. It our day. Okay. Yes. Okay. Just had to get that off my chest. Number eight, updates and informational briefings.
We don't have anything for today?
Well, that we can proclaim adjournment. Thank you.
At 6:50. Very good.
6:50.